Being 6:00 PM on November 26, 2018, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen's Meeting to order. It's a short agenda tonight. Is anybody recording the meeting?
Free cam.
Free cam. We also have a co-appointed stenographer with us recording the meeting. I'll ask that anybody that comes and speaks says their name, address, and spells their last name for the stenographer, and also speak slowly. We were requested to ask. I'll read the agenda. Board of Selectmen's Meeting, Public Comment, Consideration, and Possible Action on Application for Second-Hand Merchandise License for Excel Recycling LLC. An Executive Session, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body and the chair, so declares Excel Recycling LLC versus Town of Freetown. With that being said, I have just a quick statement to read, just to give you the ground rules of how we're approaching tonight's meeting. Just like to thank everybody for coming out. There's only one thing on the agenda tonight, that Selectmen's Meeting, and that's the application of renewal of Excel Recycling Second-Hand Junk Dealers License. As many of you know, Massachusetts State Statute states that the license runs annually from May 1st to April 30th and is subject to renewal by the Board of Selectmen acting as licensing authority. This Board takes that responsibility very seriously. I'd like to take a couple of minutes to lay down some ground rules for tonight's meeting. First, this is not a public hearing. This is a duly posted public meeting of the Board of Selectmen, which means the Board has the right to solicit and stop comment at any point. It also means the Board has the right to end the proceedings when it feels it has heard enough comment. Second, the Board is here tonight to hear comments by all parties concerned. We will listen to and possibly ask questions of the representatives from Excel Recycling and the Freetown Zoning Enforcement Officer/Building Inspector, the Freetown Health Inspector, the residents and affected neighbors, and anyone else wishing to be heard. This comment period will begin at 6:00 PM, and we intend to conclude at 7:30. If you do not have the chance to speak and you wish to submit any additional written comments or other documentation, you may submit them to the Town Administrator, and it shall be made part of the record of the proceedings for consideration by the Board prior to any vote. Finally, please keep your comments to the point at hand and be respectful for all parties involved. Due to time constraints, we ask that you come to the microphone, state your name and address, deliver your comments to the Board. Please do not be redundant or argumentative, as that doesn't solve anything and it takes away from other people that may want to speak. At 7:30, the Board intends to end public comment portion of tonight's meeting and adjourn. Barring any unforeseen circumstances, the Board will next publicly meet on 11/28/18 at the Freetown Elementary School to deliberate on information presented and decide whether or not to grant, grant with restrictions, or decline the petition as requested to renew its license. That being said, is someone prepared to speak for Excel?
Good evening. Glenn Wood, Ruben Rubin, 53 State Street, Boston. I was here at the first hearing as well, and I'm speaking in lieu of Attorney Mark, who is sick this evening. We appreciate being back in front of the Board again, and also appreciate the opportunity to have had a site visit with the Board this afternoon. As the Board recalls, we had submitted an application renewal back on March 28th of this year to renew the license that was issued for 2017 that ran through April 30th of this year. There was a submittal again on March 28th. There was a hearing on April 23rd. The meeting was closed, taken under advisement, and a vote was made a week later on April 30th. That was against our client, and that matter has been in New Bedford Superior Court since then. Based on a request at that time, we had asked that the hearing be postponed at that time to allow us to complete a million-dollar operational improvement such that we could complete German-engineered and shipped acoustic sound enclosures, which the Board saw this afternoon. We had indicated back at the hearing on 23rd of April that that was going to be completed very shortly and that testing with DEP would be completed. That request was not allowed by the Board, and the hearing went ahead and was closed, and the vote was taken. However, that effort did go ahead. Our client did spend over a million dollars on the acoustic sound enclosures. Testing that was completed in early May, as we had indicated to the Board at that time. Testing with DEP staff advanced on May 31st, I'm sorry, with a report to DEP on June 28th of this year. All of that information has been submitted as part of this new application, both through a submittal originally through our office on October 10th of this year and then supplemental submittal on October 18th of this year. So all of that information, all of that testing went ahead. Subsequent to the testing and the review by DEP over the summer, the Department asked for one specific modification or improvement, i.e. to put bedliners into the trucks such that when material, as you saw, was dumped into trucks to leave the site, that they were installed. Bedliners were ordered and were put into the trucks that are used, and then additional testing was done with DEP, and those results were submitted to DEP on September 5th of this year. Again, all of that information is in the submittals that have been made to this Board. In addition, we indicated in our original submittal on the 10th of October that we would consider and would be happy to enter a dialogue with the Board and the town about the possibility of host community agreement, similar to what you're thinking about with the Americana facility. We had proposed a $75 per ton number. We have a total capacity at the facility as permitted of 196,000 tons annually, which would amount to $147,000 annually to the town. That's an offer that we've made and continue to make. We'd be happy to continue those discussions with the Board if you see fit. This evening, for presentation purposes and as a supplement to the submittals put forward on noise and air by Epsilon, we have again A.J. Jabalowski who's here. We also have Steve Joseph from SciTech Engineering, who can, if necessary, speak to stormwater issues. We also have Ralph Child from Minslevin in Boston, our Air Environmental Counsel. He's been working for Excel for the past years and has been very actively involved with everything to do with compliance issues with DEP, which I am not fluent in and haven't been involved in. A.J. has a brief presentation and a brief PowerPoint, of which you have copies of his slides. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to A.J. and just keep this moving. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Two points. Last time, there was a weak gap between the hearing and then when you took the matter under advisement. I've indicated to Attorney Pucci a concern in reflection that depending on what comes in this evening in terms of any other submittals, none of which we're aware of today, that the two-day gap may be challenging to provide comments on those. And so that might involve some discussion or reflection possibly at the end of this evening. We had requested to receive copies of anything that had come in on the application. And again, in communications I've had personally with Attorney Pucci, it was indicated that we would be given copies electronically of anything that had come into the Board or the Town Administrator, directed again from the Town Administrator to Town Counsel, then to myself. As of noon today, we're not aware of any submittals whatsoever from Town officials or the public that have come in to the Board of Selectmen/Town Administrator. But again, would request to receive those on a timely basis, and we can consider what the appropriate timeframe might be. We were afforded the opportunity to respond last time, which we greatly appreciated, and that may prove necessary depending on what might have been submitted that we're not aware of, or what might come in in some kind of written product this evening. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is A.J. Jabalowski. Principal of Epsilon Associates. I have 19 slides here. You folks have a hard copy of the Board of Selectmen. We are following along on the screen. I will try to be as prompt as I can in order to leave time for any questions and anything else that does count. This is a presentation specifically regarding noise compliance and Excel's continuous efforts towards noise compliance. Starting with the Mass. DEP plan approval process, compliance with those plan improvement requirements, and initial diagnostics retrofit mitigation, first compliance testing. That compliance testing did show no noise from the non-Ferris operations, which you folks saw this evening. And then a step towards additional mitigation, replacement of the wall along the eastern side of the project, design of new enclosures, implementation of additional best management practices. That enclosure was installed, as the attorney said, at over a million dollar cost. IV testing and testing to a tighter set of Mass. DEP standards showing significant improvement in compliance of the residences, followed by, again, the bedliners for the truck loader. Next slide, please. Thank you. Started with Mass. DEP plan approval. In the fall of 2015, Excel applied for a non-mayor comprehensive plan approval. In preparing its application, Excel retained experience as well as expected consultants, including TechRite Tech EC, that is RAC number five, and Engineering News Records Top 200 Environmental Firms. Excel's application included background noise measurements, data regarding noise levels based on industry experience, sound assessment modeling, proposals for the installation of noise mitigation measures, and certification by a professional engineer indicating the project, based on the pre-construction design information, would meet Mass. DEP's noise policy. Mass. DEP issued... Okay. Mass. DEP issued the final plan approval in November of 2016. Next slide. That had requirements in it for the installation of specific sound mitigation measures, including a shredder enclosure, concrete barriers at the shredder openings, and noise walls at the northern and eastern property lines. Next slide. Excel provided a professional engineer certification to Mass. DEP documenting that the sound mitigation measures were properly installed. All right. Forward a couple of slides, please, Ralph. Upon facility startup, Excel received noise complaints from some of their neighbors. Excel Recycling took the complaints serious. Initially, Excel undertook several actions to address the complaints, including retaining my firm, Epsilon Associates, to evaluate sound levels and to provide advice on productive steps to further mitigate sound levels. In early 2017, Excel performed site visits and took sound level measurements and advised Excel on steps it could take to quickly reduce off-site sound. I participated in a number of meetings with technical specialists from the Mass. DEP regarding sound data and Excel operations. These meetings resulted in Mass. DEP's concurrence with a plan to install noise control measures, including but not limited to: eliminating line of sight between noise sound sources and residential receptors by installing metal walls and containers, and retrofitting additional soundproofing material at the shredder enclosure and at the eastern property noise wall. Excel implemented the suggested measures without delay, ordering equipment and expediting delivery and installation. The soundproofing material was provided by SoundSeal, a leading manufacturer of commercial and architectural acoustic noise control products. After the installation of the noise mitigation control measures detailed above, Epsilon conducted sound level compliance testing on May 4th, 2017, consistent with the test procedure approved by the Mass. DEP under Mass. DEP observation. The test results showed compliance at both the residential receptors tested. That was 42 High Street in Cell 7 Alexander Garden. During that test, noise impacts from the non-Ferris separation equipment, which is located inside of an industrial building on the Excel property, and its supporting equipment, were tested separately. In the test report, Epsilon concluded that the non-Ferris operation is not a significant source of noise off property. I participated in that test, and there was no detectable contribution to sound levels from Excel's non-Ferris separation equipment during that test. Next. Despite compliance with the Mass. DEP policy at residential neighbors, in consultation with the Mass. DEP, Excel committed to significant additional action to further reduce noise caused by its operation of property. Now, a couple. Additional mitigation measures included replacement of an 18-foot wooden sound barrier with a 32-foot metal wall constructed from shipping containers at the eastern property line, which is based on my observations, greatly reduced the noise in that direction. The eastern wall was replaced in July 2017. Next. Additional mitigation actions also included a new effort to identify and control specific sources of noise. On June 29th, 2017, Epsilon conducted additional source-by-source sound measurements on-site. Sound assessment modeling using this new data indicated that the most significant noise sources at the facility were the metal shredder and the trommel, which shred and then sort the material respectively. Next. Thereafter, Excel conducted an extensive search for the most advanced and effective enclosure for these pieces of equipment. Excel identified state-of-the-art acoustic sound enclosures from Industrial Armshirts GMBH ILG of Meterizer, Germany. ILG successfully installed state-of-the-art sound enclosures in more than 250 locations. After consulting with Epsilon and Mass. DEP, Excel engaged ILG to specifically engineer acoustic enclosures for both the metal shredder and for the trommel with the objective of significantly reducing the noise they generate. After consulting... Yep. Excel informed me they spent over $1 million for the engineering, construction, shipping, and erection of these acoustic enclosures under the supervision of ILG. By May 7th, 2018, Excel had completed the installation of the acoustic enclosures of the shredder and trommel. And there's the May 2018 testing. This was again through a Mass. DEP-approved noise testing protocol to stricter standards and with Mass. DEP observers at every position and inside the Excel facility observing operations. These next tests showed a significant improvement, including compliance at all three residences tested and a significant reduction in noise levels based on an apples-to-apples basis from prior testing. Despite these significant improvements and the compliance at all neighborhood homes, the Mass. DEP, acting within its discretion, asked Excel to further mitigate its noise impact at the undevelopable industrial area along the nearby railroad tracks. More specifically, Mass. DEP asked Excel to address the intermittent noise resulting from the loading of Ferris material, metal, onto trucks in the area of budding the railroad tracks. This activity occurs only a few times per day and less than 10 minutes per occurrence. Nevertheless, Excel, with assistance from Epsilon, investigated the issue and determined that the use of plastic truck bedliners could serve as an additional mitigation measure for the loading of Ferris material into trucks. Excel promptly worked with suppliers to install bedliners into the trucks receiving Ferris material. Excel conducted sound testing... Epsilon, sorry, conducted sound testing to measure the effectiveness of the new truck bedliners. This testing was also observed by the Mass. DEP. The testing revealed a significant reduction in sound level when loading Ferris material into aligned trucks. In conclusion, Excel Recycling has worked for more than two years to address the concerns of Mass. DEP, the Town of Freetown, and the neighboring homeowners. This included retrofitting a shredder enclosure with additional soundproofing, installing custom engineered state-of-the-art sound enclosures for the shredder and the trommel, replacing the 18-foot wooden sound barrier with a 32-foot metal wall at the eastern property line, installing plastic bedliners into trucks receiving Ferris materials, improving operational practices to mitigate noise. Overall, this investment is nearly $2 million overall to mitigate the noise impact of its operations. These extraordinary efforts have resulted in Excel's operation being in compliance with the Mass. DEP requirements at all nearby residences. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions.
Does that include everything that Excel wanted to present this time?
That does, sir. At this moment, we're happy to answer questions. We also would like the opportunity, as any questions come up or presentations, to be allowed a little bit of, you know, comment at the end. But we do have Mr. Joseph here for stormwater, and we also have Attorney Child here as well if you have any questions regarding overall DEP compliance. Thank you.
Any questions on the Board? Just a couple of basic questions. You stated several times here in the packet and here in testimony that you spent over $1 million to improve the sound enclosure. Is that correct?
That is correct. As you saw those at the site visit today, and they're shown in the slides, yes.
And was that for installation of that? Was that for the product itself, or is that a combination of all things?
That is an... The $1 million is an all-in cost regarding the specific enclosures at the trommel and at the shredder. So that is everything through design and installation associated with those two pieces of mitigation you saw today. The nearly $2 million includes the other efforts that we have been working on.
So there was another almost million dollars of other efforts that's not related to the sound mitigation system there that's running?
We'd be happy to provide more of an inventory of that as well to the Board.
Thank you. You said bedliners were installed on September 5th. Was there a retest done by DEP after September 5th? A new sound test?
DEP observed Epsilon test of that, and that was specifically a test of the effectiveness of the bedliners. So there was a test performed where material was dropped into an online bed, and then under the same conditions, material was dropped into an aligned bed. The noise levels were approximately half in the line dropping into the lined bed versus dropping into the aligned bed.
So that was a comparison test? That wasn't necessarily a...
That was not a new compliance test overall of the facility, no.
But it is an ongoing O&amp;M operational effort that's being made presently.
And my last question is, is there anything in the statute that allows for an HCA with the town? A host community agreement that you suggest? I know you referenced Maricana and marijuana, and I know specifically that there is in the law that allows to enter a community and render into a host community agreement. Is there anything in this statute that allows the town to enter into that?
No. The statute, I think, as we're all aware, is unbelievably antiquated and deals with subject matters that have nothing to do with this. Largely has to do with thievery and stolen goods. That's what the statute was adopted for. But I think that legally, surely, at an arms-length transaction, there's no inability for a town and an operation to engage in a host community agreement, whether that's a Walmart, a Stop &amp; Shop, or our operation, or the Americana. Town Council may feel or has some clarification on that, but we think it would be an important concept that we would very much appreciate it to continue a discussion with the Board and the town on.
Since the Board last met and we did not give you a license, can you tell me what your hours of operation have been since then?
The hours of operation have strictly followed that for the 2007 license.
Can you restate that again, please?
2000... We have followed the same operational hours as the 2017 license that was committed to by us in communications with Town Council and the Board.
And that would include the holidays like Veterans Day and Columbus Day as well? Did you work on those days? Was your operational on those days, and were those in compliance with 2007? Or were those in non-compliance?
Yeah, we were operating on those days.
Thank you. I want to thank you for letting us go today. Would you say that that was a typical running of an operation when we went this afternoon?
I can't really speak to that personally. I know that it was the end of the day. In fact, I'll note that in communications I had with Attorney Pucci when it was originally scheduled for 4:00, I suggested to him that that didn't make sense because, one, we wouldn't be operational. And so, and it also was going to be getting dark. So I suggested that we consider pushing it up. And then I asked whether or not you, the Board, wanted us to be operational or not. It was left open to us to decide. I would suggest that it was the end of the day, whether it was the typical end of the day. I mean, as you saw, in the other enclosure, you know, you had the end of the ship sweeping up and cleaning up along with the sweepers. Was that the middle of the day? No, it was the very end of the day, the last half hour of operation, with a hard shutdown at 4:00.
So are you stating right now on the record that at 4:00 is the end of the day, and that was a typical operation for 4:00, people sweeping and no other machinery going on? Would you say that that's a typical afternoon at 4:00? On record.
What do you... I'm not sure really what the question is at this point. Are you saying that we operate from...
John, she can come to your phone, please.
So the question is, what the Board saw between, say, 3:30 and 4:00, was that a normal end of an operational day?
Yes.
Answer yes.
Yes. Could you state your name, please, for the record?
Sorry, John Costa.
So at 4:00, usually on a typical afternoon, all there is is people sweeping up, and there's no machinery or anything else going on? Is that what you're stating on the record? That's what I saw today. So I'm just wondering. You're saying that's typical?
I believe the hours for that 2007 are from 8:00 to 5:00. So usually from 4:00 to 5:00, you can see loaders operating or, you know, people cleaning up, you know, stuff that has to do with maintenance of a facility, yes?
I didn't see any operational machinery at that time, so that's why I'm stating at 4:00. I didn't see any operational machinery going on. What I saw is people just cleaning up, sweeping and...
Yeah, and you'll see it'll be different from day to day, from a day-to-day basis, yep.
Thank you.
But I think more specifically, the answer is that there's a hard stop of the operations at the facility, the metal operations at 4:00 because per the 2017 license, which we've been committed to following, it's 8:00 to 4:00. license, which we've been committed to following, it's eight to four, but maintenance is allowed until five, which we would view as, you know, including cleanup.
Okay. At the end of the day, at four o'clock, how many trucks usually arrive after that time? And where do they stay?
Jonathan, please state what your position is with cooperation for the...
Yeah, so John Costa from Excel Recycling. At the end of the day, the trucks are parked down below at the bottom of, at the bottom of Ridge Hill, in the lot down at the, at the entrance of Ridge Hill. That's where the trucks, that's where they originate, and that's where they park them.
They're full. Today I saw five trucks in the middle of a matter of seven minutes. So what is the typical amount of trucks that would arrive after four o'clock, and when does the last one arrive?
Scale was at four o'clock.
Okay, I didn't see them entering. I saw them, actually, maybe they were waiting for us to leave, I have no idea, but they were parked around the side of the building?
Yep, they'll come in, and they fuel up, but they'll do whatever they have to do to, to get ready for the morning.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to talk over you. So they were waiting for us to leave before they came into the yard? Is that my understanding?
No, I, I think that they were just coming back for the day. If you saw trucks parked on Ridge Hill Road, they were just coming back for the day. But, so the, the truck drivers have to go in the office below, punch their tickets, punch their cards, punch out, and then they go and they park their trucks, they fuel up, they make sure their trucks are ready to go for the next morning.
These trucks were full of material?
That's fine, they wait till the next morning to dump them.
Thank you. And again, how many trucks usually come in between, after the hours of operation? Would you say they all arrive by five, by seven, by nine, by eleven?
Uh, I, it would be impossible for a truck to dump after five o'clock. They wouldn't have all of any sort of mechanism to wait in.
But they would park below...
That's correct.
And wait till the next morning, so they wouldn't wait in necessarily at that time?
They wouldn't dump, they would just, they would just be on the, on the roads, just like all the other trucks, and they'd go for five.
Okay, I'm going to ask my question again. How many trucks do you think come in after four o'clock, and what is the end time that those trucks arrive by? Full or not full?
By the clock.
So all trucks arrive by five, there's no other trucks that come in after five o'clock that are parked waiting for...
Oh, the, the last truck, there's no trucks that don't, at, at the end of the day, the trucks can come in, you know, between five-thirty and six o'clock, I would say is probably a late day for the trucks, but at that point, they're just coming in off the road, and they're parking their trucks, so, and they'll wait till the next morning to, to, to dump out any kind of material.
So for the record, all trucks arrive by six-thirty?
Where? I think we've already, excuse me, I think we've already said that nothing gets weighed in, nothing gets weighed in after four o'clock. So the only trucks that might be arriving aren't going to be going into the area that we walked. They would be parked down below, not in the operational zone. So if your question is, what number of trucks arrive within the gated facility after four o'clock, the, the answer's zero. If you're asking what number of other trucks might arrive loaded with material...
I mean, these guys, I, I guess, to answer your question, you know, these guys work a normal day. They, they, they do not run at night. They start in the morning, and they start, and they start, start and stop in the same spot, so it's not a, a position, you know, where they're going to pick scrap up in the wee hours of the morning. Do they run late in, in traffic sometimes? Sure, absolutely, but at, at that point, they'll just wait till the next morning to, to dump their load. And if it's a, and that's if it's our truck. If it's not our truck, then obviously whoever, whoever's truck is making the delivery is frankly just not going to come. We don't store any trucks down below other than our own trucks.
Could you clarify where down below is?
Uh, so, by address, it's fifteen Ridge Hill Road.
Is it that ten area, that city in there?
Yes, yes, correct.
What about the private, probably before that, where there's Excel trucks parked at?
Uh, those are being, those are for, might be for repair. There's a truck over there at, at...
That Sandman location there, I don't know, I think it's thirteen Ridge Hill?
Uh, we don't have any trucks parked there.
There's no Excel available trucks?
Uh, there is a repair shop down below, Paul, that we do utilize. From time to time, you can see trucks parked there, there's trucks being repaired now.
John?
Yeah, there's also a, an owner-operator who rents space from, from, from Sandman who works for us.
Who pulls out a trailer.
Well, he works for us, yeah, he parks his trucks down there as well, so you see, the trailer's down there.
Where do you clean your trucks, and where do you use to clean them with?
Uh, we use a company that comes in on-site that, that cleans them.
So they clean them up in the area that you were in today?
Nope, they clean them down below.
Down below, the, the area that you just indicated to Mr. Do, that down below area?
Yes, that's correct.
That ten there, fifteen, that's correct. Thanks. Thank you. All right, so there's no further questions at this time for the board, and Excel has answered the questions we've asked. We'll open up to residents. I'd like to have, if anybody's willing to speak, neighbors first, and then, if there's time, anybody else from the town that would like to speak. Would anybody like to speak at this time? Please make your way to the microphone. As I stated before, please speak slowly. Please announce your name, address, for the record. If you could spell your last name, the forensologist and archer would appreciate it.
Steve Tripp, Arlington Drive, in the summer.
My name is Sam.
Four Arlington Drive, in the summer. Steve Tripp, T-I-M-D-P.
Thank you.
Let's, let's Chris start out, and I can't believe we're still here talking about this place. It's like, this is a company that doesn't, that doesn't belong in our town. At the beginning, Excel said they understood that the residents complained the town should take its license, but they fought it every, all along the way. It said, he said they wanted to be a good neighbor, and this wouldn't impact the neighborhood. Well, evidently, he doesn't know what good, a good neighbor is, and this has totally impacted the neighborhood, and everybody's life's in the neighborhood. Not just in the neighborhood, on High Street, all the way down. First, then, then the plastic and the foil started flying over the containers and into everybody's yacht, and Excel turned around and said it wasn't coming from them. But then they turned around and said they put covers on, with the DEPs, that they put covers over the chutes, and that took care of the problem. It didn't take care of the problem. The plastic and foil still landed in everybody's yachts. So that was just a cover-up. Then, then they turned around, we called when there was fires, there was smoke pouring out of the facility. They turned around and told the fire department, they didn't have any fires. Then they got caught coming around the pile, they said there were fires, they were in the air. So is there no fire? Is there fire? The trucks go through the town, they don't even have the covers on, the metal's sticking up all over the place. Can I, can I give you a couple of things? Can I approach the board, get it? The metal's flying over, you can see it sticking out of the top of the trailer trucks, and they have no cover on the top of them. I mean, I don't have all day to stand down here and take pictures of this whole thing, but I do have pictures when I go through, and I see it. So I mean, if you look at it, there's pieces of metal, this is the third time I brought metal, and it's been all over our roads. I must have five flat tires already from all the things. Four River came down because they wanted to move into Industrial Park. Four River Industrial Park turned around and said it looked like a joke around. Said they talked to residents up there from businesses, and they all complained about flat tires too. So it just doesn't belong here. You try to say that, they're trying to keep the noise down, okay? I'm going to give you another picture. This is them using their clothing to drop a big, huge metal weight on top of scrap metal to flatten it out, I guess so it fits into the shredder. The trailer trucks come out of, out of the facility, and they park it on Ridge Hill Road, so the guy can run across the street and get a coffee, a dunk and dunk. The water that was put, I don't know how the water got in the back of the dump truck, I'm not going to say whether, but I'll tell you this, the pictures, you look at this picture, you see the water running up the tailgate, and then after it leaves, the big rust spot going down the street, and it goes right into the catch basin right there by Orger's Garage. That was like saying, hey, click, the town's coming to take a look. Here's some pictures that were taken five months ago of what it looked like, and there's another picture taken a week ago to show you how much cleaned, how it got cleaned up, so that you could see it. According to them, they don't have the smokes not coming out of their facility. When it comes through the whole neighborhood, and it comes, it's only coming from there. We didn't have these issues before they moved in, and now we have all these issues. So our, my front window, all I seen all along was a huge pile of scrap, or it's fluff, or whatever it is, it's higher than the container walls in the front. So this is my view that I get to look at every day. I know they like to stop every six months and reset the whole scale so that, you know, we did this, all the complaints don't count anymore because it's been six months and we fixed it. And then another six months goes by, we don't want to count on that anymore because we fixed it, okay? This is a, this is a picture that I took. This refrigerator, this little mini refrigerator's been sitting out on the side of these railroad tracks for at least four months, okay? How did it get over the container wall? That's my question. It's a small refrigerator, with those explosions going off, if something like this is flying into the air, it's not going to be good when a commuter train comes by and one of these things hits it. And so all I can tell you is, what I can show you in pictures, I don't have a million-dollar thing to show on a screen and everything else, or all these other people that kind of... This is, it's just not, does not belong where it is. It needs to go. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Down at Amerantes, thirty-six High Street.
I just mentioned last name.
A-M-A-R-A-N-T-E-S. Okay? This is all, my house overlooks, I have a clear view of this building, whatever you want to call, call this, this farm, right? And they do not start at eight o'clock. I'm sitting there with my coffee, trying to, my coffee, it's seven fifteen, and this place is in full mode, brick room, and it goes till five o'clock at night. I sit there, I listen to it every, every night. It's, it's, right now, all the windows shut, so it's not as bad as summertime. Okay, um, as far as you guys going over there, I've been told by the DEP, about a year and a half ago, that before they show up, we call them, they have to let them know that they're coming, at least an hour beforehand. And I'm going to bet that before you went, they were told that they knew you were coming. So you know that everything was shut down, okay? Right now, the, I'm, I'm talking, I'm hearing a million dollars for this, a million dollars for that, and now they're offering the town a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. That sounds like it's trying to sway you guys. We elected you guys to take care of us, not one, one company that's coming and completely destroying the neighborhood. Our property values are down, like, I don't know, well, I've had contractors come in to work on my house, and, what is that? And I say, Excel. And one guy looked right at me and said, you'll never sell that house with them there, okay? That, that's where we are now. We can't use our property. I have not put my patio set out in two years, because you can't sit out there Monday through Friday. You can't, I don't want my grandsons rolling around in the grass anymore, or they don't play touch football with my neighbor's kids, because I don't want them on rolling around in this grass. I brought you guys bags of stuff that I picked up from maybe a ten-foot square area. I mean, it's in the, it was in the trees and everything. I don't go back to my back lot right now because I can't walk up the hill. But I mean, it's, it's insane how we have to live paying all these taxes, and then one company comes in and throws a whole, hundreds of people's lives into chaos, because sometimes it gets so bad, I swear to God, I say to my, I gotta get out of here. I got, let's take a ride to CVS or Shores, because you can't listen to this from seven in the morning till five at night. It goes, your ears starts to get like cement blocks. It's insane. And like I said before, we, we all elected you guys to take care of us, to look after our neighborhoods, and to let something like this in, to destroy these neighborhoods, to turn everybody's backs upside down, is insane. That's all I got to say.
Hello. Hi. I'm leaning on forty-one High Street. I just want to ask if Excel, if they're responsible management, is responsible for putting this paper out? Yeah? How did you, how did you recognize our group as anti-business movement, saying that we're against Stop &amp; Shop? Amazon, Meditech, we've never had any complaints against them, or, I thought Meditech would have been a fantastic company. They've employed a hundred and seventy-five people. We have nothing against the people that work for Excel, they just work with their jobs like we do. But if they lived where we live, and they came home at night, go out in the yard and hear that, and smell that, they wouldn't want that. I mean, they wouldn't want to live there. I've lived at my residence now on High Street for thirty-three years, going on thirty-four, never had a single complaint against any business in the industrial area. I know it's from day one, I'm in with them, it's just like, obviously changed our lives. It's good to see our rep here tonight. I guess that's all I got to say for now.
Hello, my name is Joseph Brankill, I live at seven hundred and seventy Drive, in the summer. First of all, I don't...
Can you hear you? Say your name.
Jose Brankill. Jose.
Brankill. Seven hundred and seventy Drive, in the summer. First of all, time of operation is not between eight and five like this, say it is, like they already said, it starts at seven, ends around five. They do maintenance after five. You know, it, it is what it is. We hear the compares all the time. It, you know. All along, all along, my kids outside, playing outside. Noise level was unbelievable. The smell of oil in the air that nobody talks about is unbelievable. One time it was so bad, I called Kevin Viola, I was so mad, I called Kevin Viola, she said, call the police. I said, listen, the police said it's not a police matter. She goes, call the police and tell them that I told you to go there. I, I called the police, the police came. They did the report, I don't know what happened. One thing I'd like to know honestly is, every time Excel does a test, every time, and they've done about, that I can recall, three or four tests. They do it with my property, they do it on High Street... They do it with my property, they do it on High Street. The way the shredder runs is never the same as they do it on a daily basis. Can anybody answer me that? Every time they do a test with D E P. And the, the old, and the old engineering, Excel never runs the same way that they do it on a daily basis. Why? Can anybody tell me why? I know why, because the money topic wants to buy it. So, huh, it's just, you know, it's fun, but this has been going on for two and a half years. They're still debris in my, on my yard, they're still debris in my pool. Noise level is, it is what it is. I don't think, there's nothing wrong with the business, it's just the location. But I don't like to be insulted, you know? The, the last time we were here, if, if everybody finally recalls, Excel, the jury said that the noise doesn't only come from Excel, or doesn't come from Excel, it comes from other businesses in the industrial park plus the highway. So why don't we have this problem when Excel is shut down? When they close for the day, why don't we have this problem? Again, it's a continuous aggravation between Excel, between us, you know? I, I, my days off is Wednesdays and Thursdays, I cut my grass. I just wanna be with my family. I don't wanna be calling the police, I don't wanna be calling the town. I got better things to do. And we don't have nothing against John and against his father. I mean, it is what it is. But you know, my way of living is not to be changed over a company that's taking over. I mean, I got cracks on my walls, pictures falling off my wall in my house. I called the police, the police took pictures. I mean, it's, I mean, it is what it is. Thank you very much.
Joe Travasso, fifteen, Alexander Drive. T R A V A S S O S. Just like most of the residents said, it's more of the same, nothing's really changed. Uh, we don't need the nineteen slides that they put up to tell us that the ground still shakes, neighbors are still finding debris. You know, they've been in compliance, but just a few short weeks ago, November first, another explosion that shook my house, and I know it shook my neighbor's houses, at four fifty-five, at the end of the day, as you said. I have a record of it, when it happened, we called the cops. You know, black smoke came right from your stack, right at the time of the explosion, so we know it came from you. So, you know, when you say you're in compliance, or that's at the end of the day, we've seen if you're, they're not in compliance, they will continue not to be in compliance. It's just the operation. And just like we heard, yeah, they're, talk about them trying to go into Fall River and the industrial park. Even they don't recommend moving them in there. And there's no one up there. There are no homes in an innovation way, and they don't want them over there. So I think it's just very obvious, this operation just can't be there. Like I said, it's more of the same. Thank you.
Michael Cabral, point two, High Street. I'm not gonna stand here and reiterate everything that the residents have, uh, said already. Again, it's explosions, fire, oil in the air. It just goes on and on and on. The explosions are the things, uh, thing that's really concerning me. I know, they don't wanna admit to it, and it's something that is so tough to get on record. But how many people are gonna stand up here and tell you that there were multiple explosions happening at this facility? I'll leave that out.
Hi, we at eighty-seven Friend Street. My last name is A-D-E-Y. Seven Friend Street. The explosion that occurred on November first at four fifty-five, we have, we have pictures up of the black smoke and everything. And I spoke with, um, the police and fire right after that, right outside your gate. And, uh, they said to me, there's no evidence, there's no evidence of fire, there's no evidence of smoke, there's no evidence of fire suppression equipment being used. And yet we all have the photos of the black smoke, which I showed them. And their response was, well, it's just more ammo for you to use in litigation. And we have to remember that that, that comes from the fire department and the police department. You know, understanding that it, all this is, you guys just lie, and so we bring it to court. But that's where we are with this, we're in court. So why are we even discussing another application of license when you are in violation of the last license? In fact, you're facing criminal charges on Thursday. I mean, this, this is, it, it is insane that we're even standing here discussing another application for license. Like you guys have a, a clean slate, which is, you have bar from a clean slate. This is a continuation of the same complaints, of the same actions, of the same hazards, the same damages, the same nuisance. And so I, I just think this whole meeting should be moved, it's just ridiculous.
Joey, you wanna speak again?
Yeah. Yeah, I just, um, I forgot to say this. The other day I went to Junior's and I was just talking to Norman, and he goes, what, what's going on with Excel? I said, oh, it's the same old, it is what it is. And he told me, this is a business that's on, on the main road. He says that, uh, a couple days before, you walked outside and you could smell the, the odor in, in, in the air. And the same guy over the gas station, where Shell used to be right on the corner, he owns Grandpa's, and he told me the same thing. I mean, this is, and, and I'm amazed that nobody talks about this. I mean, the noise level bothers me, it really does, but I, I don't even hear noise. You know, that smell really, there are days that are really, really bad. If the wind is blowing my direction between my house and Pedro's, it's really bad. I don't, I don't see how, uh, you know, uh, the, the border health and, and D E P allows this to happen. I mean, it's just beyond me. I don't understand how long we're gonna pull up with this. I mean, I understand they needed time to get better, and when they first opened up, and, and, you know, it, it is what it is, the kind of business it's, it is. But this is two years later, and we're still having the same issues. And we sit here and we just listen that they're in compliance, which is a joke. I lived there, I, I, I lived there seven days a week, I know what I go through. There are days that we don't even know they exist. There are days you can't even be outside. And we got, these are old people in the fifties and sixties that making these complaints. These are not eighteen-year-old kids. I mean, enough is enough, it is what it is. At least admit it. You know, you, one day you say you don't have a problem, but you, you're spending millions of dollars to fix a problem that you're saying you don't have. I don't get it. Thank you.
Derek, I didn't ask you to speak, I apologize. I can't see you through the thing, can you make a statement, please?
My derek, this is a free town board of help, uh, just a- derek, this is a free town board of help, just a brief statement.
Board of help.
Back in April, we gathered here to discuss Excel recycling and their permit. At that time, I gave a long statement about my observations from Excel and its effect on the residents of High Street, Alexander Drive. At that time, I felt like Excel was creating a nuisance to the area with noise, smoke, steam, odor, and storm water runoff. Since then, almost seven months of the day, not much has changed. The cell mitigation curtains are now in place, and they do seem to help with some of the constant normal operation noise that comes off the shredder. There are also big times where the loud noise comes off the facility that does not involve the shredder, and for those, the curtains does not help. Recent testing for noise coming off the site shows compliance, but there are questions regarding that testing and how much deviance from the plan agreed upon by Excel and Mass D E P occurred before and during the testing. The curtains have done nothing to help with the smoke or the steam. The smoke stack that is on top of the shredder does little to control the flow of the smoke steam, as most of it escapes before it gets through the stack. If all the smoke steam passed through the stack, it'd make it very easy to test and monitor. The curtains have also done nothing for the odor or the debris, which both still persist in the right wind direction. Storm water runoff is also still a major issue, as evident by the notice of non-compliance issued on November twentieth, twenty eighteen by Mass D E P. In April, I stated there was no one reason Excel was a nuisance, but it was multiple issues for an extended period of time. As of today, my observations and feelings have not changed. Thank you.
I apologize for putting you off this call. Sure, anybody else that would like to make a comment?
Steve Truor, let's see, you drive in the sun. I just, but they just said they were in compliance, and now he's saying they're not in compliance with the storm runoff. So is that another story? Are they in compliance or they're not in compliance? It's just, it's one lie after another. I mean, I was out back hunting this morning, they started at, they started at seven oh eight, running the, running all their equipment around the yard. By seven thirty, shredder was up and running, the claw thing was dropping steel, the tunnel thing was shuddering like crazy by seven thirty quarter, eight. So, eight o'clock thing to four o'clock, that's bull crap, okay? That thing run all summer long, up till five o'clock at night before they shut the shredder off. So, again, another lie. It's just, how many lies can this town take? It's like, thank you.
Any else have a comment, question, concern? Counselor, do you have any to butt?
Apart from having an opportunity to maybe just provide some written comments on the testimony, and to get a copy of the photographs that were submitted, um, we'd appreciate that. Um, but I'd like to just have maybe Steve Giosa from Sitech, our engineer who was at the site visit, just touch briefly again on stormwater, because then we'd be done.
You are aware of the non, the letter of non-compliance dated November twentieth?
We are. Good evening, uh, my name is Steve Giosa, Sitech Engineering. And we were actually the engineers who worked on the original design of the stormwater management system for the site. Um, we were out there today, and we took a look at a portion of that stormwater system. It is a system that consists of a number of factors, a number of elements. It has, um, initial screening of stormwater runoff, secondary screening, well water separators. And then when you look at the site, and it's very difficult to see from here on the exhibit, but it's on the southern border of the property, there's a series of chambers that have been constructed. Those chambers act as a buffering system for stormwater, also a filtering system. And it's broken up into a number of components or a number of chambers. All of that system works, um, very well, has been designed for storms up to the one-hundred year event. We have reviewed the D E P, uh, notice of compliance, non-compliance. And it basically had to do with a little bit of sediment that occurred near the catch basins, and then they asked us to fix that, so that we were not bypassing the catch basins to stormwater flow. That's a minor issue that occurs sometimes when you have sediment post-construction. And these are normal, routine maintenance upgrades that occur on any industrial site. So the system works effectively, the system is not being bypassed, where we have flow going unregulated to down gradient properties. All of the flow from this site, and you can actually see it in that system we looked at today, you can see the water levels that typically occur within the system. They rise in that first sixty or seventy feet of chambers, reach the overflow baffle. They overflow in a controlled fashion over the weir into the second level. And when you look at the staining or the, um, water levels that have historically occurred on the second element of the system, and it's a three-element system, you'll see that you do not routinely have water levels rising in that component of the system. So although we have a very, um, large system that's been designed, it's also very conservatively designed, and we have not observed or experienced any overflow from that system to date. The D E P letter talks about, um, normal maintenance issues that should be addressed, and the letter did not express a concern that we were bypassing our stormwater management system. So we have reviewed that at this time.
Well, maybe I'll put a clarification. Uh, I'm looking at it in front of me, it says, presumably approved by Mass D E P, chat, uh, three-ten C M R twenty-seven, insulation of U C, U I C wells, number one and number two, Mass D E P observed the following. Stormwater bypassing the existing oil-water separator for underground injection control well, number two, due to improper surface grading. And it said it wasn't bypassing.
It's not bypassing the stormwater management system. So basically, we have several components of the system, and D E P is observing that there's one component of the system that the catch basins, because of the sediment, you're not getting that flow into those basins completely. But there is a backup to that, and the backup is the next stage of the system. There is no overflow of this site. Under the U I C, it has been approved with this multi-stage system, the system is working effectively, and there is no overflow discharge off-site from this, from the operational area of the property. So again, that's a minor corrective matter that has to be addressed. It's obvious when you went out there today, we've looked at that. But the overflow from that area directs the water exactly where it was designed to go, which is into the containment system, which is containing the flow on-site.
It also states that U I C well, number one, which is not currently equipped with the oil-water separator, had a sheen on the top of the water.
And that's something, again, we have not observed that, but we'll defer to the D E P and we'll work with them on a solution to that particular issue. Uh, we are looking at some options, uh, if in fact there is an issue there. But again, we have not observed what D E P has indicated there.
Did you notice a sheen, sheen today on the wall?
No. Not in the location that they identified, no.
When I asked you today about an O N M plan for cleaning the settlement that you said was what was causing this, you said there is no O N M plan, it's just an observation when we feel we need to clean, it gets cleaned.
No, what I, what I indicated was that we have basically a observation of each element of the system on a routine basis, and when those systems need to be cleaned, they're cleaned up. So when I said that there is not a set time when they're cleaned, there isn't a set time. They're cleaned when the system capacity is reached, and there has reached a point where we have to clean out the different components of the system. You'll actually see, when we were out there today, I don't know if you noticed it, in the, one, two, three, four, fifth compartment down, I believe, saw a container in there, they had actually collected debris. That's part of that cleaning operation that occurs, or the O N M process that occurs as needed. But as far as, do they clean it every month or every two weeks? No, it's cleaned on an as-needed basis, and that was what I intended to convey to you with my response.
So your routinely is as needed?
As needed, correct. Which is, which is the case with any stormwater management system, whether it's in a shopping center parking lot, or in a facility of this type. The cleaning of the system, there is an inspection process, and we, as we indicated, they're inspecting these systems monthly. And as they're inspected, if there's a need for cleaning, that's when they're cleaned.
And who inspects the system?
The operator of the facility.
The operator. And the operator's been educated or have looked for the inspection process?
Yes.
Organics that might build up and clog the drain?
They're, they're looking for all of those, all of the things that would affect the function of the system, correct.
So do you have contention that this was just a, an oversight they had unchecked recently? And that's why it was just bypassing?
No, I think what you've seen is, as with any construction site, you get some differential sediment, that's what's occurred, and now that differential sediment has to be corrected.
When are you gonna complete your, uh, the, the reform, your, the correction? The corrective action plan that's required here within 15 days?
I defer to the counsel on that.
We can speak to that. Ralph Child is going to speak to that just briefly. I note again, though, that as it relates to stormwater, stormwater is an operational issue mentioned by D E P. It's not an O N M issue.
Well, they, they issued a noncompliance order, a notice of noncompliance.
Yes, this is Ralph Child, counsel for the company, with law firm, Mr. Levin in Boston, National Financial Center. And I became involved in this facility after the original air permit was issued in April of 2016, was appealed, and then I've been involved, not only in getting that permit, but since then, I've been involved in advising the company as it has gone through the processes it has gone through with, with Mass D E P. So...
You need to speak up.
I'm sorry. Okay. So, D E P issued a letter that included a notice of noncompliance on the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, 20th. And what's been, being discussed here actually is not part of the notice of noncompliance. It's what D E P would characterize as compliance assistance. And if you, they made some observations, and they made some recommendations that they want the company to follow, but it was not characterized with respect to stormwater as a violation that was a notice of noncompliance. And we responded already to D E P that with respect to the regrading that needs to be done where there had been the sediment, or the meticulous described, they told me to get that done by the end of next week. With respect to possibly putting in a new oil-water separator in one particular part of the site, that has to be looked at more closely, and actually, there may be a different way of solving that problem with some regrading and described to D E P. And when we committed to D E P was that, again, by the end of next week, we'll provide D E P with a plan for that. If a new oil-water separator needs to be installed, that's going to be a fair amount of site work, and may or not be feasible to do immediately. But just to echo Mr. Giosa's comment, the stormwater in this site is not going off-site. What D E P was referring to in this is that not all the stormwater was going right to where it was originally designed to go in one case, and that they'd observed a sheen, and they advised that there should be an oil-water separator added as well. But the stormwater is staying on-site as it was originally designed.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, obviously, there are two different documents received from D E P. There's the letter with observations, and there's a notice of compliance itself.
Notice of noncompliance, correct, yes.
The, the letter referencing the observations includes a request within 15 days for a corrective action plan. And the chairman was asking when the corrective action plan would be available and what the status was of that. So that's a, that's a request or requirement in the letter, which is the cover to the notice of noncompliance. So if you could address that first?
As I said, we've already advised D E P that the regrading that they asked for would be done by the end of next week.
You advised D E P how?
With, with a letter.
With a letter?
Yes.
And will that letter, is that letter available, available to this, this board?
It has been sent to the town.
It has?
Yes.
Okay. Then, with respect to the notice of noncompliance itself, the notice of noncompliance describes specific noncompliance during the inspection, Mass D E P observed that the shredder enclosure was not being maintained under negative pressure as required by the November 29th, 2016 plan approval, as evidenced by visible emissions observed emanating from an access port for the shredder enclosure while the shredder was operating. And that requires certain action by the respondent being, being excelled. Could you let us know what the status is of your response to the notice of noncompliance?
Certainly. In the same correspondence that you would receive, we complained to D E P that we did not understand what they were referring to in saying that there was a release of emissions from access ports. That inspection that they are relying on was done in October, and some of the folks in the room know, D E P, after having been on this site many times over the last two years, and never less, agreed to do a multimedia inspection at a meeting in Boston with their opponents of the project, and they decided that they, they agreed to go out and do another multimedia inspection, which they did in October. And Excel, as it always has, cooperated, provided information and so forth. We were having discussions with D E P as recently as the week before last about getting together with them to hear their findings and discuss possible improvements. That was going to happen next week. Instead, D E P went ahead and issued the correspondence to you half. With respect to the finding that they reported there, we literally don't know exactly what they're referring to there, and so our response is we need more information, and we'd still like to talk to you about that, and we have a disagreement with D E P as to what the permit actually required with respect to monitoring that, as explained in our letter. So we're in continued discussions with D E P about that issue.
Could you just, for clarity, you indicate that a letter was issued to D E P and was also sent to the town. Is that part of the submission made earlier today, that from Glenwood?
I believe, I believe, I believe it is not.
You believe it is?
It is not part of that submission. That's correct.
Do you know when that letter was sent? Because we...
This, this afternoon.
This afternoon. Okay, cool. And was it sent by regular mail?
It was sent by regular mail.
Okay, so we do not have it at this time?
We do not have it at this time.
Thank you.
We do have copies of it, Mr. Rich, for you, though.
Thank you. That we appreciate it.
Sure.
Can, can I ask a question? Can you just review, I, I just, a little bit about what you were saying, because you were going so quickly, something about it was going to take a longer period of time to address the issue? Can you talk, of the grading, and you needed another plan or?
It's just, it's just a fact that taking a catch basin and taking it apart in order to install an additional component, in this case, an oil-water separator in December, is not necessarily something that can be done instantly. There needs to be a plan put together, you need to figure out how that installation will work with the rest of the stormwater system. And so what we committed to D E P was we would provide them that plan, but reserve the right to propose a schedule that will work, given the reality of construction and seeping and so forth.
How long typically does it take to refill the catch basin?
I, I wouldn't know, as Mr. Giosa said. Again, Steve Giosa with SciTech. Rebuilding or building a catch basin doesn't take long. What happens, though, in this case, if in fact we do put in a new oil-water separator, for an installation of this type, would probably be a custom order, a precast unit, so it would have to be fabricated, it would have to be, first of all, a design plan prepared, then a contractor selected to install it, then there would be shop drawings submitted to us for review from the manufacturer, the person who's actually going to fabricate the tank, then there would have to be making of the tank and then installation. That process could take anywhere from 30 to 60 days if everything went absolutely perfect. And then you have winter conditions, excavating, getting asphalt to replace the pavement that you're going to excavate during wintertime is very difficult. There are very few asphalt plants that are available for patching, and you really don't want to be creating an open erosion problem through the winter. So again, there are logistics relating to weather as well as fabrication that could stretch out that time period. Until we know exactly where D E P is envisioning the placement of this unit, which we don't have a specific recommendation from them on where their primary concern is, as we didn't observe the same things they did, we don't know whether or not installing that can occur and not worry about permanent patch, and we can do temporary patching because it's in a low-traffic area or something like that. So we're going to have to evaluate where the ideal location is to put this particular supplemental tank in. This is not something that was part of the original approved design. It's something that they thought would be, they think enhancement to the system. We're willing to consider it if we can find a practical way to install that component to the system. But again, there may be, again, weather conditions may dictate manufacturing conditions, because I have a feeling that because of the fact that we're retrofitting a unit, it's probably going to be a custom-built tank. It's not something we just pull off the shelf, drop in the ground, and we're going forward. So we may want to look at it in a custom standpoint because of grades, cover over the system. We're dealing with a lot of heavy vehicles running over this, so we can't take the same unit that you put in a subdivision roadway or in a parking lot or a shopping plaza in a situation like this, because we are dealing with different loading requirements that are going to require a more beefy design to make sure the tank doesn't collapse over a period of time.
So what you described is a custom tank, because by itself, stormwater separator, fuel oil separator is not a rare thing. It's something that's quite common and required by code in most buildings, that most, most building applications that have truck traffic out there.
Yeah, most, most of them have standard, standard oil-water separators you can pull off the shelf and put in. Because we're retrofitting into a site that has a unique loading requirement, we're not going to go with a standard tank in this case. And so we're going to have, we may have to deal with a more shallow tank because of the grade differential to get proper cover over it to maintain what's called the H20 loading for the tank. So again, there are other considerations, and we just don't know yet what we're going to be up against, you know, what D E P is really looking for here.
May I just supplement that? We got the notice of noncompliance, you know, at the end of day on Tuesday before Thanksgiving. It's not Monday after the weekend, so there's further discussion to be had with D E P, and you can't just commit to something you don't even know what it is at this point. And what the notice of noncompliance has to this issue require was that we have a plan in a certain period of time, and a proposal in a certain period of time not to make the installation happen in that period of time.
Unfortunately, we, we were in the same boat. We received this on the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, same time you did. So this was just brought to our attention also. So that's why we're asking questions basically right off the sheet, because it's all new to all of us. Questions, concerns? Counselor, any other questions, concerns from your client?
No, sir. We'd be happy to close the hearing at this point. Again, just be afforded the opportunity to supplement, presuming you would, we don't need Wednesday for a continued hearing, and I presume you'd be taking it under advisement this evening and looking to schedule with another meeting a week down the road or whatever you want. You know, if you wanted a more definitive answer on the stormwater, I mean, we'd consider trying to get that to you, and maybe continuing it out in two weeks would be proper, but we'll leave that to your judgment.
Board's position on a next meeting date?
I want to review some of this stuff.
Absolutely.
I think it's where we're discussing not having the Wednesday meeting for deliberation. I think that we have received a lot of additional information. I think certainly counsel would have the opportunity to supplement as needed, but we, we need the opportunity to review the documents that have been submitted.
That being said, though, we are, I don't want this to drag on, so I, I think a week would be in order. Do you have any schedule conflicts a week from today?
I, I would just point out, as Attorney Rich knows, that there's nothing in Superior Court that's pending in December, and that we were...
I think we have it December 13th.
Yeah, but we, in, in discussions I've had, Mr. Rich, with, with your brother.
No, I'm aware.
I mean, we're, it's, it's very clear we're not going to make that date, even though we both represented, both sides represented the court that we would attempt to, but I think that that just isn't feasible. I think that there's a lot of information that we would surely encourage and appreciate the board to read. We're at, at the earliest back in front of, in Superior Court, the middle of January, so we think that even pushing back your deliberation several weeks, you know, we're of no objection to that. But again, that's your decision.
My concern, counsel, is the time of year.
Of course. It's a tough time, yes.
Everybody looks, Wednesday, the 5th, looks all right, if you're scheduled? Lisa?
Yes.
Mark? Yes?
Yes. I'll entertain a motion to schedule the next hearing in the deliberation.
Well, not the...
It's not a hearing, I'm sorry.
We're going, we, yeah, we've, we've concluded the, the hearing, the board's portion of the hearing, also for the purpose of deliberation.
Yes, to clarify, this is not a hearing.
Well, it's a hearing. It's not a public hearing.
Correct, not a public hearing. So I would entertain a motion to have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, I think it's the...
December 5th?
5th, December 5th, at 6:00 PM here. Okay, that's been the motion. Now, second motion. Any discussion on the motion hearing? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can all, record also state the members present, and that Mr. Sullivan, the third member of the Board of Selectmen, has recused himself through this entire process and remains recused. Counselor, the 5th of December.
Thank you, sir. That gives me your time.
What time? 6:00 PM here. Thank you.
Good evening.
At the, that is being nearly 7:30. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have nothing for executive session, so we will have no reason to go into executive session. Second, we have a motion made, seconded to adjourn. Any discussion on the motion? Gary? None? All in favor? The meeting is adjourned.